7:01.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the session this Action Meeting of the Mawa Board of Education for August 29, 2018. Would you please take roll call?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Linda.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Sacco.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kuzmarsky.
Here.
Ms. Conoco.
Here.
Ms. Mavertish.
Here.
Dr. Morthe.
Here.
And Ms. Barron.
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on August 29, 2018, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Ms. Mavertish, would you like to lead us in the pledge? Would everyone please rise? Thank you.
I pledge to lead the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to recess to executive session? Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Mr. Kuzmarsky. Okay. May I have a motion to reconvene, please? Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Ms. Conoco. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your questions. Okay.
Thank you.
Nobody. Okay. Do you have a report for us this evening, Dr. Schoen?
I do not have a report this evening other than to turn all of my time in this meeting to our lovely, wonderful, and special Director of Special Services, Mrs. Lisa Rizah, who's going to present for us this... Our mandated HIV self-assessment. Perfect. Thank you, Lisa. You all can hear me. The camera hears you.
Wonderful.
At all.
Don't make me do this ever again. You got the clicker? There we go. So, this is our annual HIV self-assessment that we're required to conduct. Did you just click too?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Which is, in essence, a rubric that is presented by the Department of Ed and then each building is required to self-assess. And the process for us is that the school safety teams meet, as they do every year. Principal and the school safety teams generate scores based on the evidence that they have. And then I meet with the principals for discussion and review of their own self-assessment scores. So, the rubric addresses these core element areas. Nothing has changed since we self-assessed back when the law went into effect. So, we look at our programs, we look at our trainings, we look at staff instruction and training, we look at our curriculum, we look at our personnel, we do incident reporting review, we do our investigative procedures, and we do our HIV reporting. So, those are the areas that the rubric addresses. You receive scores based on the preponderance of evidence. A zero means that you have not met any of the requirements. A one is your partial, a two is that you meet, and a three, of course, is that you exceed the requirements. And in really, in order to exceed the requirements, you're going well above and beyond the intention of the law, and you're focusing a lot of your energy on the expectations within the rubric. The maximum score that any building can achieve is a 78. And then, of course, as usual, all of the school scores are averaged to get our district score. In all of the years that we've submitted our report, we've never had the Department of Ed reject our scores. They've always acknowledged and accepted our scores, which is a good thing. So, this year, Mawa High School rated itself a 77 out of 78, and I concur. And the high school achieved all of its max... achieved their maximum scores in all of the core elements that are listed there. So, yay, Mawa High School. Remapo Ridge Middle School accurately rated itself 75 out of 78. And then you can see that not nearly as many core elements they've rated as high in maximum score. But I'll go into a little bit more detail on schools that have identified some deficiencies. And it's going to all be relative at the end. All right. It's not going anymore, Dennis. Thank you. Joyce Kilmer, again, a 76 out of 78. And you can see where they've self-acknowledged their maximum scores. Keep going. Betsy Ross, again, mirrors what is fairly consistent within the district, and that's a 76 out of 78. George Washington, a 75 out of 78. Kevin was a little hard on himself, and rightfully so. And our district score...do I have Lenape still, right? Lenape is 77 out of 78. And again, achieving maximum scores in those...maximum scores in those core element areas for a district average of 75 out of 78 points, which is fairly consistent with all of our years previous. This is where it's really just essential for us as a district to stop and take a moment. In all the core areas and elements, we're either meeting the requirements or exceeding the requirements. There is not an area on the rubric in which the district is saying we are negligent. So, there are no zeros and ones. We are at where we should be. Again, the exceeding the requirement is an extra effort. And quite honestly, the areas in which we could probably go a little bit further are not areas that ultimately result in any deficiency. Our children are safe, we're addressing bullying issues, we have programs in place. It is adding what may be two professional experiences to the school safety team to a third in order to make it exceed. So, we're already offering what is baseline and reasonable. The question is, how much energy and time do we want to expend to get to exceed in order to have that perfect score, which, you know, is something that we can discuss and decide in the long run with the administrative team. But from my perspective, based on the cases that we're dealing with and the types of investigations that we're dealing with, there is nothing glaring within the district relative to culture and climate that makes me want to put the brakes and say, wait a minute, we need to really hone in on something. I feel like we're doing a good job. Okay, Dennis. So, we had 64 total investigations, and only 17 across all six buildings were actually confirmed cases. Let's look at that 64 and accept the reality that within this district, we do not allow discretion relative to conducting investigations. So, the minute the word harassment, intimidation, or bullying is uttered by a parent, a student, a teacher, or, you know, anonymously reported as such, an investigation is triggered. There is no discretion. Now, the policy does allow for discretion. My recommendation and what you have adopted is that we don't allow for discretion. The DOE did give districts leeway in discretion in saying that the principal is permitted to poke around a little before saying, yes, we need to go to a full-blown investigation. I do not believe that is within the district's best interest to do that. While principals will say, you know, the investigation is cumbersome, I think it is an obligation of the community that we have that any perception that is deemed as harassment, intimidation, or bullying needs to be acknowledged and looked into. And so, that would be a complete investigation.
Is that our written policy?
Yes, that is your written policy. You had discretion at policy time very recently to say, no principals could dip around. But my recommendation to Dr. Schoen, who graciously accepted that, was that, no, there is no discretion. And that, for me, is relative not only in the best interest and best practice for our children and our culture and climate. From a liability standpoint, it is essential in my position. So, the areas that are ultimately in need of reflection, again, from meet to exceed, I'm looking for patterns within buildings that have self-identified look. Instead of getting the highest score, we said we met it and didn't exceed it. And that's that we annually assess our HIV programs and approaches. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't sit and reflect on our HIV approaches. I do that twice a year with every building. I sit with them, we review the HIV data from that point. So, from September to December, I will sit with the teams in December and say, what have your cases looked like? What are the patterns? What are the concerns? What are the issues? We do that. What the Department of Ed wants to see under one C is a formal issuance of an actual survey or assessment to our community. That is an intense investment of time because we compel parental consent for the children to participate in those surveys. The problem is, it doesn't yield us enough data. Of the high school, we may get 64 responses back. 64 responses back relative to the amount of time that we spend when we submit survey is not time well spent. We're better served speaking with our faculty and saying, what are you seeing in your culture and climate? Speaking to students when they're in a situation and saying, what is it about the environment that's causing this? Or what is it about what you don't know that we need to teach you? So, the informal methodology is not acknowledged by the Department of Ed in the same formality. So, if we're going to invest time and money and energy in order to make one C from meet to exceed, it would be a formal survey, which we've done in the past. Again, didn't yield us anything. Core element 3D, we can up the ante by doing more professional development. But again, the question is to pull people off of their day-to-day tasks, to go from meets to exceeds is an administrative decision, really. Do we really want to pull our guidance counselors and our child study team people off of their day-to-day to merely sit in professional development, which will be fruitful and benefit, but it's only going to take us from meets to exceeds? And in order to affect change in the culture that doesn't really need change, I don't see the value. But again, that's for Dr. Schoen and Mr. Fair to really, you know, decide based on my input. And then, the school teams meet outside of two times a year for culture and climate. And those are internal building-based meetings. So, they do it with me twice a year, that's a given. But within each building, have they gone beyond twice a year within their cohort to talk about culture and climate? And I will say to you, in buildings that have zero actual HIBs, they're not pulling their staff in order to meet. And all of our elementaries this year yielded investigations with no confirmed HIBs. So, K through 3, we've got this on lock. So, as was my commitment to you when I took this on, based on, you know, my fondness for regulations and the law, everything was investigated within the timeframe set forth by the law, and all of the investigations were satisfied to the criteria of the law. And that is my number-one obligation to the board and the township relative to liability, of course, in addition to and not separate from my obligation to assist in creating a positive working and learning environment. So, these are all our top-scoring elements. Again, that means that they're exceeding the Department of Ed's expectations at this point. And this is what I'm going to focus on for next year, really hone in, in particular on our middle school, and take a good look at some of the confirmed cases some more, and see what else we can do to affect some change on the culture and climate, to inhibit students from committing HIBs on each other. And then, to really, based on the discretion of Dr. Schoen and Mr. Fair, plan and schedule more professional development for the anti-bullying specialists in each building. We have formally trained any administrators who are new to the district and don't have the training so that they can enact the law as obliged.
Lisa, if I may, you've already started that second bullet already at the middle school with additional training for guidance counselors so that the entire staff will be trained in HIV training because they're the first sometime, the first people, right?
Yes.
That kids will speak with. So, you've already started that.
Correct, absolutely. So, those are my goals. Our scores, again, are not inconsistent at all from previous years. And as always, the Department of Ed has acknowledged what we are rating ourselves on.
Any questions from the board relative to harassment, intimidation?
Is a hard copy of this PowerPoint available?
Sure, we can make it available to you. Absolutely.
And as always, Lisa, you know, the schools do a great job internally, but the oversight of the program and its timelines and those things that you hold dear are a direct result of you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
As our coordinator.
All right.
Just a quick...so, like, some schools have slightly higher scores. Are there any exemplary practices in one school that might apply to another school?
Well, I think, for me, while the rubric is certainly something of value because the Department of Ed sees it as such...
But looking sort of beyond that, just...
I think, for me, the reality of the success of our program is in the manifestation that in K through 3, of those investigated, none were confirmed HIB cases. So, that is the data that I use when I sit with school safety teams to say, there's no pattern in your culture and climate if there's no confirmed HIB cases.
Right. But the high school scored a 77 out of 78, and the middle school was just...I mean, we're talking one or two points less.
Right.
So, is there a practice at the high school that could translate to the middle school?
No. It's a matter of meeting versus exceeding. So, if we're going to...right? Everybody has met the DOE criteria.
Right. So, but is there a practice at the high school that exceeds the requirement that might be suitable for the middle...I'm just hypothetically.
Yeah. If I would have identified something relative to that, it would have come out in my school safety team meetings with the Ridge and with the high school. Because what I do is, obviously, I take the knowledge that I learn from each building, and I sit at a table, and I say, that's funny. That's something that this building is not experiencing. What are you doing differently? So, that is absolutely something that I do in the core reflection twice a year. And if there were something that I felt needed to occur, I would bring it to this table and say, this is an area of deficiency programmatically, and this is how we need to affect change. I don't feel that way. I really feel that when we're arguing over meets versus exceeds, it's almost like, again, why, you know, how much more energy in the district should we be focusing on HIV if we're at what I deem to be a good place?
You do what you do just to go up a point for the sake of doing it and not because it's needed, and that's just a waste of everyone's time and money.
And I'm not suggesting...I'm just saying that there may be qualitative effects of some of these programs that may not be ranked in the rubric, but that may have qualitative benefit at another school.
Correct. And that would manifest.
And it sounds like you do that when you...
Yes.
Yeah, I heard this idea.
Twice a year in every building, I am examining.
And that's what I'm getting at.
Yes.
You had made the comment in the presentation that one of the principals was maybe a little bit hard on himself. To what degree is subjectivity involved with this?
Well, I mean, I'll let my experts in rubrics have that argument with you. I believe that there is certainly...you can manifest some data, particularly when it's anecdotal data versus hard paper data. So, I think that when I say Kevin was hard on himself, I think he wasn't, you know, I don't think he was unfair. I'm just in jest saying, you know, hard on himself, you know?
Like, I can always do better.
He had zero confirmed HIBs in his bill.
Right. And it sounds like...and it could be that he's not giving himself credit for something he was actually doing.
Maybe he believes he can always do better. So, he's more likely to score himself lower than he is somebody who's willing to give himself...that's just Kevin. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Bleeker, do you have anything for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Just an update on the steam building. Try to have a meeting, give a brief update. I encourage everybody, if you haven't had a chance, please go to the website. We are updating that at least every month with a look ahead of parts of the project that are upcoming, as well as ones that have recently been completed, and also pictures and photographs of the site and of the construction grounds as well. Things are going, knock on wood, so far, very well with it. Just earlier today, they started to move back the construction fence from around the side of the cafeteria parking lot, loading dock area. That is slated to be paved tomorrow. And a lot of the foundation for the new building is completed. I'd say probably about 75% of it. They are leaving a small portion still open for access for some trucks and vehicles. Some of the interior walls should be going up within the next couple of weeks. One other part of that inside of Building 7, a sprinkling system for Building 7. All the rough plumbing for that has already been put in place in advance of the students coming back. We want to make sure that was all done before school comes back, and that should be wrapping up next week as well. So, progressing very well.
As the students who park here, address the high school, come there and go back, are they going to be able...they won't be able to enter the construction site as a shortcut?
No.
You mean pass-through over here? You mean pass-through over here? Is that what you're saying? Pass-through over here?
Yes.
Yeah, you're on.
Many students may access the building behind the cafeteria that enters between the cafeteria and the auditorium. That will not be accessible to them. They have installed on the other side of the cafeteria, by the access road, just by the band room, another card reader, so students can access that way. That's another option.
Thank you.
Two other items. Just, we are about one week away from opening. Just want to say many thanks to the technology, the custodial, the maintenance, the technology staff, the transportation staff, secretary of support staff. We are almost there yet, almost there to opening with students, one long weekend in between to tie up a couple of loose ends. But a lot of great work has happened this summer, and I will look forward to the opening. And the last item just to bring up is item 16B on the agenda, resignation of Cheryl Giochi, Assistant to the Business Administrator. That position is a very important one in the business office. Cheryl's done a great job with it since I've been here, and just wanted to take a moment and wish her the best of luck in her future and her next position.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fair, do you have any report for us this evening?
Just short, we had our first day of our administrative retreat today, and it was a really nice day. So, we're excited. We have two more days, and we're excited to get started for the 18, 19 school year.
Fantastic. Great.
Thank you.
I do not have anything for this evening. Do you have any board committee reports?
For Policy Committee, 15H is second reading adoption of Policy 5512, which is mandated, just citation updates for the HIV policy.
I had a report on the Instructional and Curriculum Committee. We met preliminarily with Mr. Di Toro, Dr. Di Toro, I should say, over the summer before...but everyone calls me Dr. Morthe, so I'm going to say Dr. Di Toro.
Call Mike.
Mike? Okay, with Mike. Over the summer, just while he transitioned, and then we had our first meeting in August, and we'll be meeting monthly. A few things that came out of that meeting I just wanted to highlight. Number one, Courtney Corrella did a nice presentation for us on identifying gifted and talented children in the district in Project Challenge, and how she's really stepped up transparency of the program and also communication with parents. And it was very impressive what she's done with it, and I think it'll be a much better way for kids to be getting into the program and more easier for parents to understand the process. They are assessed at the end of third grade and the end of fifth grade for inclusion in Project Challenge. There's a few courses we're adding. One was AP Computer Science Principles, and another was Applications of Math Lab 1, which is a support for math. A few things...important update is on this Parent Academy, which we're going to be continuing this year. I think it started small last year, but we're really going to focus on that. And three areas that Mike identified that we're going to work on are supporting children's social and emotional needs, technology, digital citizenship, cyberbullying, and curriculum topics like literacy and math. One important partnership is with the Mawa Municipal Alliance. They do a lot with mental health awareness, with cyberbullying, all the technology stuff. And I think they're going to bring in a program January 2019. So, again, you know, we will work with them and hopefully get a really good turnout. But again, you know, hope that all these programs are, again, to support kids in multiple ways.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Gallo?
Negotiations. I direct people's attention to Resolution 15T, which is the contract, the follow-on contract with our supervisors. We had a very constructive dialogue with the supervisors throughout the process. I want to thank Roger Pelletier and Mickey Van Ness for putting the shoulders to the grindstone and for being very thoughtful and professional throughout the discussions. I also want to thank Kyle for joining all the multitude of spreadsheets and work. And obviously, our committee worked diligently to come out with a contract that I think reflects how we value our supervisors. So, I think we ended up in a good spot from everybody's perspective. I don't want to...Van Ness Committee, we'll wait till next time because there'll be some developments. But for now, we're okay.
All right, very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Under Board Member's remarks, your confidential list you received this evening, you may cross off the fax machine. It's no longer active. I thought I was paying $78 a month for one fax a month. I said nah.
Pete, I really wanted to fax you that. Like, I was going home to fax you.
Wait, what's a fax?
Oh, you young'uns. Thank you. Okay. Do you have any other board member comments or changes of phone numbers?
Two items. Three items, actually. 15M is the column moves for our staff. So, thank you to our staff members for going the extra distance to get additional credits and, in some cases, degrees. We congratulate them on their achievements. And thank you for putting the effort in to benefit our students. I think there were 26 employees on that list. It's pretty remarkable. A little bit less than 10 percent of staff. The other item was 15Q. Nobody probably counted, but there are 203 volunteers, parent volunteers at Lenape Meadows. That's an astounding testament to the support of our community for a school. Lenape Meadows is gifted...I think there's about 600 kids there, so this represent...there's 200 parents supporting 600 kids. So, it's a pretty remarkable thing. I was astounded. One other small item was item 15U. So, this is an item that Linda brought to my attention the other day. So, sometimes board members have conversations with some staff, and we don't find out what the resolution to that, what happened in that conversation. So, I had a question about 15U, which is adding an additional checking account, I guess, at TD Bank to segregate our scholarship money from other funds we have. And I guess it's...one is a control issue, and the other is potentially get some more interest on the account. So, that was the resolution. That was the outcome of my question to Kyle. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew.
Thank you very much. Good job, Kyle. Anybody else? Okay, very good. All right. Okay, old business may have a motion to move old business. Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Ms. Conoco. We'll call on that when you get a chance.
Yes. Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Sacco.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Abstain.
Mr. Kuzmarsky has left the dais. Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Abstain.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes. Okay. Now, I have new business. I'd like to take A through AA. I have a motion to proceed. Mr. Gallo, second by Dr. Morthe. Do you have any comments, questions from the board? Okay, I think we're good to go on that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Sacco.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes. Okay, now, I'd like to take new business A through U. Motion to proceed, please. Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Mr. Gallo. Any comments on any of these items?
I just want to echo Kyle's comments about Cheryl. Unfortunately, she's not here tonight, but maybe next time she'll be here. Cheryl helps me abstain from the correct checks. So, whoever replaces her has to be well-trained on the posted notes.
Yes, she does a great job.
So, she has been wonderful. She has such a great personality. She's also been very helpful in negotiations and health and a whole series of other initiatives that Cheryl behind the scenes... her behind-the-scenes stuff, that she's a trooper, and we wish her well, and we wish her new district well.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to miss her. Yes, because she would open up all the plans to, to sign, exactly, to sign.
That's priority number two.
That's priority number two, yeah, yeah, and this whole pile. But I will miss her. So good luck, Cheryl, in your new endeavor. Anyone else? Anything else? Okay, could you take the call, please?
Uh, Mr. Wendrickowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Seco.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes. Excuse me, public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes.
Evelyn Slakmar, forty-three, ten, ten place. So, just a couple of things. An update on the concession stand as we're gearing into marching band and football season. I know the moms, you know, are interested in how much longer it's going to be and where we stand with the concessions.
We're, we don't have a definitive timeline right now. We are taking a step back to see if the concession stand is most beneficial and fiscally wise to spend the money on it right now, or to take a look back and see if it could be encompassed perhaps into a larger project. So it's, there will be a facility, finance and facilities meeting coming up to further discuss what those options, weigh the pros and cons, and then decide a direction to go.
Yeah, as you may recall, the setback was, the original bid came in much higher than we anticipated. Kyle, Scott, and I recently took a tour of Building Five, and, and I can tell you that the bomb shelter of our concession stand definitely doesn't need to be replaced. The, but Building Five offers a lot of different challenges and potential opportunities that we'll be looking at more closely, I think. So unfortunately, we're not going to be even bratwurst out of a premium hot dog stand. We're going to be living out of the bomb shelter show for a while longer.
Okay, so we're going to-
It's on the agenda.
Okay, okay. And then the media set the windows, I guess, where that stands?
Yeah, that, currently working with the architect right now. That is, really no changes to the original bid specifications. As I said previously, unfortunately, that was a scenario where we bid it out and no contractors bid on that project. And to rebid it, we wouldn't have made the lead time for the materials. So we'll just look at the best opportunity coming up probably in the fall or early winter to bid that project for summer two thousand nineteen.
Okay. And then, uh, the, the parking lot, and then just, okay, so the number of parking spaces that used to exist before we started the construction, so, you know, in the two different areas, is the number going to remain, or is it increasing or decreasing?
I would probably, if I may, I would speak to Mr. Pascal about that, because we did decrease some, obviously, with the way we're reconfiguring, but as far as where they're going at this point. Ultimately, there will be more parking spaces. When the steam addition is done, there'll be forty-eight or forty-nine additional spaces that will, I'm sure, be utilized by students and also staff for professional development during the day. But how many additional and where we are in over-under, you're better off if you wouldn't mind talking to Mr. McFarren, who I believe takes care of that, or Mr. Pascal.
Okay. And then during the school year, I guess, with the construction going on and everything, this access road back here, is that going to be cut off as it has been from, like, you know, traffic only for, for this school year, or?
No, that's not the intention. The, the primary reason it was closed off was because they were working on the loading dock area for the cafeteria. Now that that should be paved tomorrow, and we don't anticipate needing that roadway for much construction, so it would be opened up again.
So it would be open. Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Mavertish, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, very much.